A meeting to order, it is 7:02, if you could please rise and join me with the [inaudible].
In obedience to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible in liberty and justice for all.
And if you could join me in a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. All right, I am looking for a motion for the approval of the August 5th and the August 13th, board meeting minutes, please.
I'll move the 5th as presented.
Okay, so Suzanne's moving the 5th as presented.
And seconded.
Seconded by Jenny, do we have any changes, additions, alterations, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one abstention, that's me, I was not present at that meeting. And I will also entertain a motion for the approval of the August 13th, school board meeting minutes, by Jenny, seconded by Suzanne. Do we have any discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you.
Chair, procedural question.
Sure.
Will we have minutes for 8:19 that we can vote on?
I don't think we've seen those yet.
We haven't.
We haven't received them from enough.
I think, I did.
I did.
Yeah. I saw, well, I saw, they weren't per se minutes, put together as minutes, they were her notes.
Yeah.
And I think her notes are gonna end up being part and parcel of minutes, but there needs to be a...
I think she sent him out to everybody.
She said there's gonna be more to follow.
Yes.
I didn't get anything.
You didn't?
No. But not seen anything from her.
We'll follow up with her and see if she's planning on sending anything more, and then if the board would like, we'll, we'll put the her minutes, her notes into our minute format for the board's review.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a correspondence folder?
We do. All you have in it are substitute reports, and just to point out, there were two substitutes for Mountain View for the first week, and that had to do with, we had an issue with the fire system, and we weren't sure that part of the building, that the fire system, the alarm system was going to be working, so we did speak with the chief, and we got two substitutes in if we had to have part of the system down, so that's what that was for.
Extra ayes, for instance, it wasn't to replace any.
Okay, before we go into our commendations, I did have another piece of correspondence that I do need to share. Keith needs to take a leave of absence, and he has asked, he's stepping down as vice chair as soon as we elect a new vice chair, this will be a short-term leave of absence, but it is for health reasons. He hopes to be back with us, month and a half, two months, but we do need to find a new vice chair. Jenny?
Could I nominate Phil for that position?
You can't, do we have any other nomi-- do you accept Philip?
Sure.
Okay.
I think it's seconded.
We do need a second, but I wanna make--
[laughing] Seconded by who?
Seconded by who? Okay. Do we have any other nominations?
Procedural inquiry?
Yes.
Are we gonna do that like the election policy, or as a motion?
I've accepted a motion for it.
Okay, 'cause I don't know if we have a policy on replacing it, I know we have a policy on elections.
Don't believe we have a policy. This is the way we usually do it. We don't often handle it.
No.
It doesn't often come before that we are midterm in this matter, but I do have a motion on the floor, it is seconded, I have no further nominations or motions, I'd like to call the vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Six, opposed? Abstention. Dan, you're not--
I won't abstain from the motion, 'cause I think we have a policy for elections, that's--
Okay, and Philip is abstaining as well, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Do you send him a letter wishing him well?
Absolutely. All right, now that that business has passed, we are on to our commendations and our good news. You know, probably not, Jenny, well, we did in the very beginning, but I know that not everybody was here, we do have some new members for our teacher reps, and we also have a new student, I don't think that you were able to--
That was your last--
Were you here?
Yes.
It's been a long summer.
Yeah.
I do apologize.
No, it's okay.
I do wanna welcome you all to the table back for our session, we didn't really take a break over the summer, but I know we didn't see you guys over the summer.
We didn't invite you.
No.
Lucky you.
No.
More than welcome to come.
Right.
Right.
Do we have commendations, good news?
I can come--
Go ahead.
--from the high school, we've, just a few things, we just started, so, the school looks great, obviously, custodial staff did a great job over the summer cleaning and working outside, too, on the grounds, and we are recovering from the flooding, hopefully we'll be able to avoid replacing too much, and then, first day of school went well, the student council did a great job organizing lots of activities, and the student ambassadors also did a great job giving tours to all the incoming ninth graders the night before, so they do a great job at that. And then, next week, next Thursday and Friday, we're getting a, having a little cultural exchange, it's pretty exciting, a group from Nicaragua is coming up here, we've taken several trips down there with students, and they're coming up here with a group of dancers, they studied traditional folk dancing, and they're gonna be working one day with the new dance classes that we have in Santa Barbara, and then the next day, they're gonna do a presentation, and that will involve some members of the class, hopefully, it's, great.
When is action?
Thursdays they'll be at the school, and then Friday they're presenting, it'll be around 1:00 or 1:30, period 8, on Friday, next Friday, 20.
And so--
And part of it will be a presentation about the organization that leads the trips down to the community. That's it, now, Maple.
Excellent, thank you. Jenna?
Pardon my voice, our good news is, the teacher workshop day went really, really well, the teachers came back really excited to see what the new year was gonna bring us with kind of new admin and the new students, the first few days, the kids seemed really excited, and there's a lot of chitter chatter about what the new stuff is gonna happen, would there be a lot of change, and even today, I was hearing like how excited they were for the upcoming things that are going to happen, that are kind of talked about, like, we have for the hilltop, which you did roll up today, that's why we're in our shirts, that if they're really good Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, then they get music and they held up on Friday, so we tried it last week, just for a few days, and that's all they talked about, like, I can't believe we have to listen to music, oh, it's so awesome, like, and they said it was so much quieter there, 'cause no one really wanted to talk, they kinda just danced in their seat while they ate, so good things are coming, but I just can't wait to see what else happens.
That's fun, that's great, thank you. Lisa?
I have reports from three different schools, so from Maple Avenue, we had a great start to the school year, on the first day event, many parents and guardians took time out of their mornings to come and meet their child's teacher and see the classrooms, on Wednesday, September 11th, at 6:30 PM, there will be an annual volunteer orientation and fingerprinting session for parents who want to chaperone field trips or work with students, and they're encouraged to attend that meeting in the school's gym. Our parent group, the PFT, has over 15 students who are participating in a garden club program, they're gonna be planting fall vegetables in raised beds in front of the school building, and a special thank you to our master gardener, Tracy Morley. From Glen Lake, the first few days of kindergarten have gone very smoothly, compliments to Goffstown Truck on timely arrivals and departures, compliments to summer maintenance on completion of projects, including exterior painting, installation of more efficient lighting, and installation of our sun pump, kudos to Ray Pettigrew, our school custodian, for making our building sparkle, special thanks to MC Berry for organizing the summer professional development offerings, our staff have returned excited and motivated, thanks to the SAU administration and the Goffstown School Board for all your hard work and support, Glen Lake anticipates a great year. And from Bartlett, Bartlett had a great opening, first grade teachers had an open house on the afternoon of September 3rd, students were able to meet their teacher and classmates before school opened the next day, on opening day, everyone met their teacher and classmates on the playground before school, and on Friday, we had our first fall school meeting, lunchroom and playground rules were reviewed, including how classes can earn the golden tray and golden sneaker awards, other school routines such as the quiet coyote and show lines were also reviewed. Except for the elementary.
Thank you.
On the student front, not much has happened, just 'cause it's the start of school, but the fall sports teams have started off really well, cross-country, boys placed first in one of their first races, the field hockey team has won both their games that they've had, and soccer, I know, is doing very well, and football has got off to a rough start, but I think they'll do well eventually, and that's pretty much it.
That's fun, thank you.
Can I have a little question?
Sure.
What's the golden sneaker award?
That's a really good question, 'cause it's from Bartlett, and I'm not from there, I just got this today, so I actually had that question for David, too, I'm assuming it has something to do with PE class? Do you know?
I think it actually has something to do with the PBIS program, it's the, Bartlett is a PBIS school, the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, for example, last year at Mountain View, we did the golden plunger for the bathrooms. I don't remember hearing about that one, but that's how you do it, golden plunger.
So this could be interesting.
Let that one pass.
That's funny.
So, so a picture is worth a thousand words, isn't it? Well, that was too good.
That's great.
Do we have any other commendations? I actually have one, and I would like to commend Andy Pishka and those working with him on the Mountain View Middle School cross-country team, and it has come to my attention that membership in that team has bumped up to 60 participants, is, Jenna, do you work with--
Assistant coach, yeah.
Excellent job, you know, a team of 60, just that growth, as much as it says something about the school, and certainly says something about the athletes who are in it, it absolutely says a whole lot about the leadership and the people who work with the children--
I do.
--to get the team to grow, so, well done, well done. Okay, public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, hang on.
I guess it's good news, but the good news to me was that the water did not get the gym floor.
That is good news.
I'd like to commend the people, the cleanup shop, they did, it was fantastic, I was down here at 10 o'clock, and it was almost all cleaned up.
Excellent.
That was good.
Do we have any other commendations before moving forward? All right, seeing none, public comment, I likewise see none, so we can go to our standing committee reports, policy review committee. Do we have anything for policy review?
No meeting until next week.
No meeting until next week.
See for the chairman. Not anymore?
No, not, well, temporarily, I mean, the committee will need to make arrangements. Okay, planning on communications.
See, you didn't tell me about that, Mark, you snuck that one, and you didn't say, oh, by the way--
Too late now, Mark, things.
No, 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 but--
The planning and communications committee met this evening, and following our board retreat earlier this summer, we worked on our communications and work plan for the upcoming year, and specifically working on ways to get press releases out into newspapers and other web resources, so we looked at topics for the year that we would be working at, and certainly welcome input from the board as well as we go along.
Thank you. C and E?
We have not met over the summer, our next meeting is on next Monday, the 16th, at 7:00 at the SAU, and we will be entertaining any new course requests that we may receive, we'll be reviewing the summer professional development that went on, and getting an overall summary of the summer school success program and how that went, and we'll be confirming our work plan. I will make sure that we have invitations to Boston and Dunbarton to join us for that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. Next up is budget committee report, we have not met yet, our next meeting is scheduled for the-- I'm sorry. Okay, admin and finance.
Oh, good lord, I'm still going through it, but let me read you the numbers, we have five manifests, July 15th, August 5th, August 19th, and September 9th, that equals $5,790,062.86. The majority of same, or the majority, little over half, would be payroll, taxes, benefits, and related costs, related costs being unemployment and workers' comp premiums, that was about $3.1 million. Inside the $3.1 million, the 22 pay cycle, you all have your little sheet, there was a payroll on 9/3, and then another one on 9/5 to keep the cycle in order, sped activity had $82,840, there were a myriad of general expenses, many of them were paid from funds that were appropriated in FY 2013, so what was closed on June 30th, some of that money, remember, we approved some security enhancements such as the roofing, it was $73,500 on these manifests, we paid for the Mountain View roof installments and payments on there, for instance, St. Anson College, the arena rental for graduation was $5,700, security enhancement at MBMS, $12,000, Honeywell was $14,000, the second semester volk tuition, $52,000, and we had, from this year, GE Capital, which is for the laptop leases, we pay that at the first of every year, to keep the lease down, there were two payments, one for about $88,500, and another one for $46,500, and all the other were, well, at least $614,000, I found another one, Honeywell Phase 1, about another $107,000, so that doesn't change the total total, but the itemized were around $4 million, so that gives a total of $5.8 million to the manifest, I read the exact number, do you have any questions, I'm sure Ray would love to answer them if I don't know.
I'll second Adam, though.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Three unanimous, thank you.
The second item on the agenda was the MS and the DOE 25 signing, and that is the end of year, June numbers, and I don't, part and parcel of that includes part of the 2.5 percent discussion, and I didn't know if we wanted to wait till we get to the 2.5 discussion before we do that, but right now, what the board did was $75,000 was voted by the board when we didn't know the numbers, and said we wanted at least $75,000 to be put aside, there's an update to the DOE 25, with this being the appropriate time to read those numbers?
Sure.
Why don't you give them the layout, please?
Hey, the, back in July, we were looking, or early July, we were looking at a potential return of $219,000 in the way of unreserved funds at the end of the year, as we've completed our MS 25 and DOE 25 looks, we had a significant improvement in revenue to the tune of about $407,000, we realized additional tuition revenues, with special education revenue being a large contributor to it, as well as revenues that we realized from the transvolk program that's run here at the, at the high school. Our Medicaid reimbursement rate, we picked up another $52,000 with that, and then we did have a, an improvement in grant revenues last year, you recall, the board took a conservative position when it forecasted its 2012-13 revenue, revenue position for grants, sequestration was what we were all worried about at that particular point, so we picked up additional monies there. The unreserved fund balance, after the transfer of the $75,000 into the 2.5 percent contingency fund, we have $626,056 to, to return as unreserved funds.
Okay.
I'm thinking, Dan, you wanna jump, jump back into this now with your discussion?
Yeah, well, we can either do it now or later, because we need to sign the DOE 25, that's the forms tonight, but we can also bring up a discussion either now or at the 2.5, whatever your leisure is as, as chair, holding the thing, we in A and F talked about the potential of adding to that $75,000 deposit, so that we had a little more in there to do what we need to do in future years.
Okay, let's do this, let's finish our, our subcommittee reports--
Okay.
--and we'll go to the 2.5 percent as it's on the agenda, we've got a good introduction, but let's just get through our committee reports and we can revisit, sound fair?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Right, just so I understand, I wanna understand correctly, the unreserved fund balance, those monies from our budget that we did not expend last year, does not, the number that you gave us of 626 plus the 75 would be about 701, does, does that include unanticipated revenues?
Yeah, the, the makeup again is, we were going forward with, we came in with about the $220,000, underrun on our expenditure budget, the rest of it was comprised of additional revenues that we realized.
So, so, just, just for the sake of illustration, and forgive me, even though I think we probably do this every year, when you look at the appropriation that we asked for, at the end of the year, of the appropriation that we asked for, we had not spent about $219,000. The rest of the unreserved fund balance that gets to the 701056 is comprised of revenues, greater revenues than anticipated from special education, from the transvolk program, an increase in our Medicaid returns--
Correct.
--and on our, on our grant revenues, on funding that was greater because sequestration didn't affect, didn't have the impact that we anticipated it could.
Correct.
Okay, thanks very much, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Could I ask for a clarification, though? Would, the 219 was after we took the 75 to reserve that out, so if I took the 219059, put the 75 back in, that would have been the total unspent, but the current unspent on that side, the 75 is counted as part of the spent? If we look at--
It's counted as a reserve, right?
As a reserve.
So it shows like it's--
Yes.
--it'd be spent, so it looks like it came out of the expenditure already.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Dean.
Do we have any discussion, any other discussion on this? Okay, and we'll pick it back up, new business, subsequent, see?
Then, unless, I mean, members have something else, I think--
We did.
They covered it.
Okay. Elementary facilities building committee report?
Do you have a motion on the floor?
We already voted, we voted.
I'm not the only one.
Yeah, no, we did, we had a, we did vote.
Yes.
So, elementary facilities, do we have the report, it doesn't look like you guys have met, you've been trying to meet, or--
Yeah, we've, this is our second shot at trying to put the band back together again, so we have responses from four of the original 13 members that aren't willing to meet the second time around, it's a lot of work for four people.
Yeah.
We have the two elementary school principals that are willing to recombine with us, and we have two community members that are willing to come back in, and Sue has also agreed to rejoin the committee. What we did share was, the intent of getting back together again was to put a postmortem together of sorts on what we did, what we could have done better, given the bond vote in March of 2013, the failed vote, also to begin to develop a new public education program in support of the March, the tentative March 2015 vote, when we, when the board wants to put that, or should the board want to put the warrant articles back on the ballot, that is the charge that was shared with the committees, I assume that's still the intent of the board, we may need the board's help in identifying new members--
Definitely.
--or if you want us to go out and try to recruit additional members, I think it's a lot of work for four people.
It's too much for four people, you need, you definitely need more, have, you haven't heard back from the other, other people on the committee, or?
That's correct, that's correct.
All right.
And that kinda happened to us the first time around, and the respondents this time were the same that we saw last spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the people you haven't heard back from, have they said that they, they were not interested in working with the committee, or have you just not heard from them at all?
There are some of them sitting at the table tonight, could ask the question.
I believe I am on that committee, but I don't recall getting any communication, if I am one of those people.
You weren't, right?
If there are others, they may step forward. I don't believe I'm that committee, and maybe I'm not on the committee, but I think early on--
I think you were, early, early on.
It would be nice to have a couple additional board members on that, Sue.
I mean, as of now, I've got, I've got, you know, Keith was supposed to be on at Reda, and then Suzanne, you know, we may need to pull some other hands on deck here.
At least, at least for the time being, I'll be Keith.
You'll be Keith?
It's in my backyard.
Suzanne, you have a question?
Yeah, we thought we might wait until after the March vote, when people are thinking about this stuff--
Okay.
--and reach out again.
But I thought the purpose of the committee, too, like, we had talked as a board of trying to keep the committee somewhat active.
Right, I know, but, like you said, four people's not enough to get anything--
No, it really isn't, I'm trying to gauge what the, the interest level is of, you know, some of our, our parent people who had been involved previously, we did have a decent core of members of the public who had, had participated.
So I think if, like, in March, if we went out and asked for parent involvement again, we might have a better shot, when people, as I say, are, just having voted, have an interest in what's been going on.
Okay.
And folks have probably heard that it's not gonna be on the ballot in '14, so they're saying, why bother now, you know, something like that.
All right, what's your sense, right, is your sense that you've heard from everybody you're gonna hear from?
I had talked to Jennifer Coro, and she was interested in still being a part of the committee.
I saw her on the distribution.
And she has not responded to my invitation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay. I can, we can make an attempt to reach everybody by phone, of those that haven't responded yet, if, if the board desires that.
Be interesting to know one way or the other, if it's a matter that, oh my gosh, it was an oversight, I meant to get back to you, or I've been traveling, or whatnot, or if it's a matter of like, no, you know, it just, it'd be good to know.
And if the, I mean, two cents, if the, if there's a specific purpose to it, and it leads to what Sue's recommending, you get the debrief piece and you get a plan going forward, and that might take a meeting, or, or maybe two, and, and that may be a way to approach it and get-- way to approach it and get everybody back at the table for that one shot.
Okay, let me continue to work on that, and I'll report out at our next session.
All right, thank you, Ray, I do appreciate that, that time and effort. Goffstown, New Boston area committee report.
We haven't met or have any plans to meet?
I think we, we don't have an area because we made a motion to create an area on the warrant in March, so there shouldn't be a tuition.
It's a tuition committee report.
And, and I don't believe, I haven't, I haven't heard anything following the August four, I think it was August fourteenth, on meeting in New Boston. I know it was something that they were going to discuss, so.
Right.
So I will take charge of following back up with those folks and figuring out, putting together, um, how, how we are going to reconstitute and when.
Is there a question as opposed to what we were thinking and what they were thinking as far as legal opinions?
If I can maybe share, on behalf of the New Boston Board, at the meeting they had in August, their attorney has a different opinion than the Goffstown School Board's attorney. We do have a New Boston School Board meeting this Wednesday. If it's the board's pleasure, I'd be happy to, if New Boston is willing to do this, to get the two attorneys together and see if there's any common ground that can be found in terms of interpretation.
I, I, we, we actually had a, I think we had that discussion, so if you could facilitate that.
We, we had the conversation about the two attorneys talking.
Yeah.
And what I'm presenting, and what I will present on Wednesday evening as well, is I'd like to actually sit with them and hear what both of their respective opinions are. That's the piece that hasn't happened, and right now I think we're stuck in neutral.
Yep.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is not contentious, this is a friendly guess.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
We should need to get on the same page.
All right, so Brian, you will take care of that?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, Goffstown, Dunbarton Tuition Committee Report, we need to meet, um, Keith was part of that committee, I had Phillip as an alternate, Dan as another alternate, um, so we need to pick up somebody who need one of you.
I'm on the committee.
You are, yeah, I was just looking, um, because I still have you, I'm still here, so I'm trying to fill Keith's spot, and, because we need to, it, it needs to happen. So I need either Phillip or Dan, um, willingness, schedule permitting, to, to step in on this committee. Yeah, this is the Goffstown Dunbarton.
I don't care.
It doesn't make any difference, I, I would make this one suggestion, I would think that the best way to move this forward for that committee, whether Dan does it, or I do, or we both do it, is to sit down and have a conversation with the administration to make sure that we have a decent understanding so that we can move forward with some direction on that.
Absolutely.
Just, just to make sure that we can form everything over, because we've talked pretty informally about it, and the fact that we have a template, um, but exactly what it's going to look like and what it needs to capture may, may vary from the template, it may not.
Okay. Something else that I do think that we need to do, um, is I would like to direct Brian to, um, take a poll and get a feel for how many Dunbarton parents are actually interested in continuing, um, keeping their students here. So we, we have a good solid number that we, we know of, of, of what we're talking about. Does that sound fair?
Absolutely.
That's, that's a good place to start.
If we have, I think any information we have is going to be helpful.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be in stone, but I think it's helpful.
How can you prepare a budget when you have no idea what's going to show up?
So, I do, so we'll do that. And we need the subcommittee to get a meeting on the table, on, on the books in very short order at this point, so we can record it.
How do you propose on doing it, Brian? While you're finishing?
Honestly, I have no proposal for how to do it besides directing the administration to do it in the best possible way.
It's unbinding, so if it's, if they think it's binding, some may not want to do it because they may change their mind.
I, I think likely what we would do is we would work with both Mr. McBride and Mrs. Hastings, and we would have some correspondence that would go to the Dunbarton parents to gauge their level of interest. I might ask, you know, either MC or I will probably work with them in that capacity to get a sense of are parents interested, not interested, um, and to be able to get a sense of, it's, to Suzanne's point, it's going to be very hard for us to look at budgeting if we don't know how many Dunbarton kids we're going to have, and, and it's going to be a little bit of a leap of faith, I think anyhow. In the current area agreement, I remember reading a date that they were going to let us know why. Was it October after the start of the budget?
I think it's October first that they're supposed to let us know.
I thought it was like October first, that they were going to let us know the interest for the following year.
No, that's in the area.
Yeah, isn't that the date that they have to give to us?
It is, that's in the agreement, you're absolutely, it is, it's October first.
Well, I suppose there's a lot of discussion to be had around that, but this isn't the right time or the right place, but, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But I would agree that it makes the most sense since we, the students are here, it would make more sense for the correspondence of the committee, how else would the Dunbarton School Board get the information other than sending it and asking us for the, at the SAU for the information and going that route, so.
Um, is, who's, so, who's on the, Dan and I were the alternates.
Alternates, and it's myself and Jenny, and then Keith.
Um, yes, because it makes sense to do it now. Can we try to do something on, and Ray and Brian, if you're available, can we try to do something late in the afternoon on Friday?
Um, tentatively, I can.
I'm in town that day.
Um, what are you, how are you defining late in the afternoon?
Three o'clock or later.
We have a three o'clock Honeywell meeting.
When will that get over?
Probably about three-thirty.
Okay. I'm very likely, but I cannot confirm until I go home and make sure, I, I have somebody who needs a ride somewhere, so it's a matter of if I can get somebody else to do the driving.
Is, is four o'clock possible for you, Jenny?
I think four would be good.
Dan, is that potentially possible for you, four o'clock on Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. Will that work for you, gentlemen?
Yep.
All right, then let's, let's plan on that unless something derails it.
At the SAU.
At the SAU.
Can I also inquire, would it be the board's pleasure for me to notify the Dunbarton Board that we're making inquiry with their parents?
Yeah, and, and to share any data, absolutely.
Yeah.
It seems to me it would be a convenient-
Would you like me to draft a letter on your behalf?
Yes, please.
I'd be great.
Okay. We all set? Okay. Um, SAU Executive Officer Superintendent Search Committee Report, there is no report, of course, because we have not met since. Um, I would say that that committee will be waiting a reassignment or a new charge or a reformation after the SAU Board meeting, which typically takes place in October. Superintendent Report.
We had a great opening to school, it went incredibly smoothly. I'd like to thank all the administrators, the teachers, the custodians who did a great job getting the buildings ready. Mountain View is doing a great job with Mrs. Hastings, our new principal, and Mr. Lane, our new dean of students, um, as well as working with the current Mountain View administration. They've, they've really been, um, gelling and clicking and working really well together, so we've been really pleased with that. The Goffstown High School flood, we have a second occurrence of a very similar water event. I wanted to thank, first of all, all the folks who came in and cleaned up, as Mr. Boyle said, this, um, this water event was cleaned up before it could get to the gym, and I think if it hadn't been for the hard work of the folks that, I'm going to read their names, we likely would be talking about a, an issue of the, the gym floor being compromised again. Mr. McBride was here a good chunk of the afternoon, Don Tabor, Ben Tabor, Craig Gamache, Dave Johnson, Jerry Paris, Caleb Palmer, Dan Paquelin and David Moody, all came in and worked, some of them as many as nine hours, on Memorial Day. So, um, just a, Labor Day, thank you. Just very appreciative of all the hard work that they did. Ray, Jerry, Frank and I met with Carl from the DPW, and what we wanted to look at and talk about was, we obviously have a second event of the same, of the same magnitude. Are there things that we could consider or look at in terms of drainage, how the water is flowing on the property? It's kind of, um, the perfect storm of bad situations, you've got a, a parking lot that pitches directly at the building. So, we did, um, have quite a bit of discussion, we looked, we walked the property, we looked at all the drainage elements, we looked at what we could consider doing, and what we talked about, and it would be our recommendation, would be to look into doing a drainage study, and as opposed to thinking about mitigating factors that we may or may not know the effectiveness of what they would do. So one thing that the board could consider is if you'd like, we could get some information about what a drainage study would involve. Carl did recommend this as well, and said that otherwise you're, you're kind of, um, just throwing things at the wall and hoping something sticks.
Pushing water someplace.
So, you know, at this point, we have two events of the same magnitude. It's fair to say that many years ago, we didn't used to get two and a half or three inches of rain in the scope of an hour, and unfortunately, now we do. So if, if that would be something that the board was interested in, we'd be happy to find out the scope of that. According to Carl, he thinks a lot of the information that the engineers who would do this, the data that they would need, we already have. So from the last building project, he thinks that a lot of that, um, mapping and under the ground, where the bedrock is and some of those features, he thinks that they already, they already have a good sense of that.
Okay.
So do you have-
Yeah, just one point to add on, um, a meeting has been set up for tomorrow with Meridian Land Services, they were the ones that came up with the design for the student parking lot up around the ball fields. Uh, that meeting is going to be tomorrow, uh, the original designer is coming in to take a look at what's going on, all at no charge for us. But we'll be able to determine there if in fact we do have drainage plans, or what it might take, uh, to get to the, uh, the drainage, uh, study that you had talked about earlier. We'll have a better feel hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, so that we can keep this moving forward.
We could show them the video.
Yeah.
And literally, you could watch the camera, you could watch the water coming down that parking lot, um, it started to rain and then it got worse and worse, and next thing you know, I mean, it was waves coming down that ramp.
Good question, all right, the last one came in through the shop?
This one did as well.
It did?
Yeah, that whole area, you know, really the contributing factors, the water all pitches into the same place, and there is a, um, a drainage system there, but the water doesn't go anywhere. It ties in through, um, what was it, Ray, a two-inch pipe, that once the storm drain starts to fill, there's a two-inch pipe that is supposed to drain it out, and ideally it goes underneath the property as part of the drainage that's coming off the roofs and the foundation drains, and the volume was just too much for it to handle.
Right.
You know, so, some of the things we talked about, could you put a pump into that that has a float in it, then when, when the drain, the catch basin starts to fill up, a pump kicks on and pumps the water out? I mean, I think there's a lot of things we could do, but absent having any real, you know, mathematically generated information where we really don't know what the effect, and we don't want to go out and throw money at a problem that we don't know it's going to fix it.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do some work and we'll report back to the board on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Mountain View roof, flood number two. The situation with the roof is that one of the drains on the flat section of the roof, um, kind of over by the eighth grade wing, the, on the left-hand side, if you were facing Mountain View, one of the roof drains was not installed correctly and resulted in a pretty significant amount of water coming down through that drain. The roofer really did a good job accepting responsibility, he had a team there repairing the drain and a number of other punch list items that we identified after being up on the roof with him a number of times. The custodial staff did a great job cleaning up, we actually will be billing the roofer for their time. The roofer had a cleaning crew, actually two cleaning crews on site. The damage that we had, um, mostly involved a lot of ceiling tiles and some damage to some teacher materials, but our new carpet, which is in the stairwell, was damaged and was ripped out and is being replaced with, um, with tile, so that's happening at the expense of the roofer. And there was a smart board in one of the classrooms that was damaged that is also being submitted to the roofer's insurance. So I think, uh, those are the two big pieces. The floors, some of the floors have to be stripped and rewaxed, which again, we're asking the roofer to accept responsibility, which he has done. Unfortunately, apart from this one drainage issue, the roof looks great, and they really did a nice job, it's, it's clean, it's, um, they, they did a nice job apart, obviously, from the damage that occurred. Well, Mountain View, again, we had a PSNH pole that was struck by lightning.
Oh, gosh.
You can't make these things up.
[laughing].
We got notified, um, yesterday morning, early, that PSNH was at the school, and there was a noise coming from one of the poles that was concerning. Actually, one of our staff members, I'm not sure who it was, but heard the noise and said, something doesn't sound right. So we had PSNH come out and they, and they confirmed that there are, um, lightning indicators, lightning rods of, of sorts that are on some of the poles, and this one did its job, it apparently got struck according to the line crew, and we had to replace it, which involved taking Mountain View offline for power for over an hour. And, um, it was not an imminent safety issue, so we were able to keep the area clean, keep it clear, and they actually did that, um, after the kids had left for the day, so that was, that was good that we were able to not have, um, the learning, um, compromise. You all know about the graffiti at Maple.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the custodial staff did a great job cleaning it, and all the graffiti's gone, so they did a, they worked really hard to do that.
And the artist?
Um, it's in the hands of the police department. At this point, we were able to submit video footage from when it occurred, so the police has all of that for their investigation. We received an inquiry, and I wanted to gauge the board's interest in this. MVP does a Washington DC trip that I think people are probably aware of, they've been doing this for many years. They've asked if they might be able to do a presentation for the board, so I wanted to gauge the board's desire to hear a brief presentation about that trip.
The, a couple of questions I asked is, one, which class, which course, the benefit for going, what do they see, um, that'll probably be part of the presentation.
I think so.
As a preliminary, history?
It's not a school sponsor.
Right, it's sponsored-
The school has nothing.
It's sponsored by MVP, so we don't, the school district doesn't have anything to do with it. It does involve the kids missing two days, kids leave on a Thursday, they leave at, I think, after, after twelve on Thursday, so they miss about a half a day on Thursday, and they miss a full day on Friday. I'm not entirely sure, Dan, how many students they bring, how many chaperones, I suspect that that varies as a function of interest.
And our jurisdiction over this is? Anything? They'd want to present something to us, I don't mind listening.
I'm interested in hearing, I'm interested to know why they, they wish to present, if they're asking for us to, to take jurisdiction, if it's just informational.
Okay, I'll be happy to schedule that with them. I wanted to let you know that as in the past, Senator Lou Delisandro is going to be visiting and is going to tour all of the schools on September twenty-fourth. We've been selected again for civil rights data collection through the Office of Civil Rights.
What day of the week is that, Brian, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Uh, the twenty-fourth, I think, is a Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
Tuesday. So we have a full schedule for him for the day to visit, to visit the schools. Uh, we've been selected again for the civil rights data collection, which is a random selection, lucky us. I have an out-of-state field trip notification, the high school field hockey team is going to Boston University, this is a repeat trip, so just, um, notification only. Ray and I could give some Honeywell updates if the board is so inclined to hear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Ray, I'll start, and please feel free to jump in. The oil tanks, the oil tank at Mountain View has been abandoned in place, filled with a slurry, it was approved by the state and the fire department, so that tank has been abandoned. We do not have any kind of- We do not have any kind of monitoring or any oversight of that tank at this point. We are free to abandon it. The propane tanks have been installed at both the high school and at Mountain View. They look great. They did a nice job. They put fencing around them, riprap on all the slopes so that there won't be a water or erosion issues, which we got to test on Labor Day. And it held up pretty well. The boilers here at the high school are being converted to dual fuel. So, we'll have the ability to flip a switch and either burn oil or propane as the market dictates relative to pricing. At Mountain View, the boilers have been converted over to propane, so we're able to heat the school now with propane. They've done some, they installed a new oil tank at the, at Mountain View to run the generator. The generator was tested. All of that worked great. Really, they've done a nice job on all the mechanical systems. They've done some work around the hot water systems, installed new hot water heaters at Mountain View. At this point, their work is also focusing on the building envelopes. So, looking at the different seals on doors and windows, looking at, making sure that the building envelope is tightened up and as well as exterior lighting, installing, you know, energy-efficient lighting sources. Here at the high school, they've been installing new lights in classrooms. They will continue to do that work after school. So, it won't impact during the day. It won't impact teachers in their classrooms. Ray, anything else to add?
The DDC control software, Gary can probably give us an update on that, but I understand that it is still being worked on this week and that commissioning should, should happen this week. As soon as that's done, then Honeywell will be able to go in and begin the control expansion in each of our classrooms. So, that'll be a nice piece of work before the heating season starts.
And I would say, in addition to Gary, Steve Bourgier has been working very closely with the folks from Honeywell and figuring out all of the, the tech pieces to allow that system to work on our network. Any other questions on Honeywell? We've been meeting with them every week, so we have project managers' meetings every week and overall, the project's gone smoothly. I have two inquiries from, on behalf of the New Boston Board. They've asked me to inquire if Goffstown might have any interest in sixth-grade sergeant camp. As you likely know, New Boston and Dunbarton have done a, a trip together for sixth graders going to sergeant camp in the spring as kind of a pre-transition process. And with, with Dunbarton leaving, New Boston was wondering if, if the Goffstown Board might be interested in sending kids or some kids to sergeant camp with them.
It sounds like a great idea. Do we have an idea of how it's facilitated, what the costs are and how we go about it?
Yeah, they, they do, they do fundraising and parents pay, but I'd be happy to get costs and, and the like. They wanted to start just with, is their interest? Your sixth grade is a whole lot bigger than their sixth grade, so there might be a cap in terms of how many kids could go. But they were, they were just interested in, in what the pleasure of the board might be.
Absolutely. I mean, and it's a good opportunity to bring those kids together before day one.
I think it's a great opportunity.
You know, and start, start building relationships.
It's actually in Hancock. It's a, a site that's owned by Boston University.
I think the biggest thing is going to be logistics.
Yeah.
Dan?
Oh, rigorous. What is sergeant camp?
Sergeant camp is a week-long environmental school. Kids leave on Monday morning and they return back to school on Friday afternoon. They stay there those nights. It is a, kind of a cabin situation that you have unheated cabins. And they do a variety of curriculum elements where they do everything from orientation, orienteering, excuse me. They do a lot of science activities and nature kind of field trips. And they do hiking. They have a ropes course. And they have different environmental school activities that they do around groundwater and pollution and things like that.
And it's during the school year?
It is.
Yes.
It's in the spring. They, they go in, I want to say May.
I hear it's great.
It's fun. I, I go and I chaperone at least one night every year. It's, it's a lot of fun. The kids have a blast.
Do we have consensus that we're at least open to it?
Interested? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring that back to them and see if we can get some more information. And the last piece I had was, New Boston also inquired about their fifth and sixth graders being able to play sports at Mountain View prior to coming here. It's my understanding that it's been for a while that Dunbarton had made this request of the Goffstown Board. And Mrs. Moran and I did a little digging. She spoke with Steve Fountain today. And what the arrangement is, is that kids can try out for non-cut teams. So, that's cross-country, track and field, and wrestling. Those are the three non-cut teams. So, they wouldn't be able to play soccer or basketball, baseball, softball, field hockey, the like.
Those teams very rarely have a sixth grader on them anyway. They're mostly, it's a very rare athlete that makes the cut teams anyway, so.
And I think Jenna might have some information to share about, do you have fifth and sixth graders?
For cross-country?
For cross-
A lot.
It's a non-cut sport though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. But there are actually more fifth and sixth graders, I think, than something.
Wouldn't it be the same if I didn't ask about cost-sharing model? Is there one?
Currently?
Yeah.
I do not believe there is.
Do we have a count of potential athletes? One of the things that we, we talked about at one point in time, probably in the budget committee here, was that each of the towns has their rec leagues themselves. They have a league, and then we have a league in the school as well. And so, I'm still trying to work through where that line of demarcation is. I mean, where do we bring them? The, the fifth and sixth graders who don't come to school here will likely be coming at seventh grade and getting them involved in the sports activities that, that might be afforded fifth and sixth graders. But is that all on Goffstown taxpayers? It's, it's a question.
There's also no coverage for transportation, so parents have to provide their own transportation.
And so, maybe what the answer will be, but if we can find out, maybe there's no additional cost. Because you pay for a coach, you pay for a coach. And we do that potentially. But I'd be curious, that would be part of a decision-making that-
And quite honestly, what's your liability for students who aren't attending your school?
I don't know if there's an agreement, and that's something else that we would probably want to look at.
We do, we would need to look into this further. I don't think it sounds out of the question, but I think we need more information.
Cover the liability.
We're not in a position tonight to make a decision. We should put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. That's all I have?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, the board discussion of budget parameters.
I think we should skip it this year.
Skip it, just altogether. We're not doing it. There you go, Suzanne. Good thinking. Good thinking, right?
That's hilarious.
Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, I've given some preliminary guidance out to the schools suggesting a zero-based budgeting approach.
Yep.
And to actually come up with the costs that school administrators feel it will take to run their instructional programs for the year. We haven't focused on trying to stay at last year's level cost-wise or to consider anything with respect to tax rate impacts, but really to focus on what it will take to do, to put in an instructional program across. This year's budget is a very dangerous one to use as a model, given that it is default and there were some huge, huge cuts that were made across all elements, especially in our discretionary spending accounts. That's why I'd like to get back and see what we should be putting out there. Again, that's the guidance that's, that's gone out to administrators. We can revise it if the board feels we need another approach.
I think it's a good approach. I just know that we are going to need this to be as low as possible. But I think we do need to see realistically what the numbers are that we need to run a program. Does that make sense?
I would agree that, you know, I would like to see numbers that they feel they need to run. And then, when we put it all together and we look at it, we say, then we have to go back and do the same thing that we always do. What, what is it that we, we may or may be able to do more, more likely? What is it that we are able to do without? All of those discussions would take place, but I like the zero base, saying, "This is what I need." Do they get any advice on potential? Because next year, or the budget that we're going to be dealing with, will be dealing with a lower rate of attendance, expected attendance from Dunbarton. So, from what we were told earlier, there's not enough decrease in student population per grade to necessarily make an impact on personnel. But it does need to be looked at to see if there's some shifting there.
We've started those conversations and you're right, Dan. It's hard to really judge if there are corresponding reductions in either staffing or materials and the like based on the numbers. Probably what, where we're landing ourselves is we're going to present the board with, here's what would happen if we had zero Dunbarton students and then say, you know, 50% of the eligible Dunbarton students and then 100% of the eligible Dunbarton students. And somewhere in between is likely where we'll land ourselves. With the direction that the board's provided tonight, hopefully, we can have a little more accuracy in what those numbers will be.
It's a lot more work.
Well, I, I don't know any other way that we could do it.
And the aggregate, it might work, saying, okay, we have 50%. And you look, yeah, because when you see the budget, it says, okay, I'm budgeting $4.79 per person, per student for these kind of supplies. How many Dunbarton students were expected of 100%? How many are 50%? How many are zero? And as an amount of needed money, you can say this is the impact. And we can look at the additions. So, it's, that's where we are.
I think we need to know. I think we need to look at that.
I think it's too diverse really to look at any staffing needs now, though. You know, we're decreasing in staff, I think. Don't, I mean, don't you-
Well, we're, we're going to look at all that pretty comprehensively and we'll make recommendations accordingly.
I think that study is going to help.
I think so, too.
I see that you have a timeline here, a preliminary timeline.
I do.
Attached. Is there any way to move this up so we can get this forward?
Can we move me?
Can we move your timeline up so that this budget, this school board approval of the budget on Monday before can be done any sooner?
To get into the hands of the board and the budget committee.
Yes, I want it in the hands of the board so that we can take the time that we need to discuss it, look at it, make our decisions. And then it needs to be sent over to the budget committee in a timely fashion.
There are two weeks reserved for workshops, school board workshops on the budget, beginning on October 24th and the week beginning October 28th. Those are areas where we could probably accelerate the board's work and final approval of the budget.
I'm actually looking to accelerate the delivery of the budget to the board, to this board here.
I've got a piece of mail to deliver.
What's that?
I've got a piece of mail to deliver if it's possible.
High sections?
Done, yeah. Instead of waiting for the whole, whole budget. School by school, is it done? Possible.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can get this earlier, I think, I mean, obviously, admin and the building, you guys need to do what you got to do to, to get the budget tab and you need the time that you need. But if we can get this sooner rather than later, I'd like to see us do that so that we can take the time that we need and then it can still get to the budget committee in a timely fashion because they need to get that turned around by January, six, seven, wherever.
Right before Christmas, hopefully.
Well, that's right, because you're trying not to be there, you know, on Christmas Eve. But certainly, the sooner we can get a, a completely presented budget.
Have they offered a, a desired date?
We haven't met yet. We haven't met. But this is, this is for myself, knowing that we need to take the time to go over it and make decisions that we need to make. And then it needs to move forward.
Well, let's work the schedule and we'll, we'll bring an update to the next meeting.
Okay. For sure. Anybody else?
I think there's a lot more groundwork before it gets to us this year, so I would hope that that would be done thoroughly instead of quickly. You know, if it meant doing it thoroughly and getting it later than doing it quick and getting it there early, that would be my preference.
And so, I'm not suggesting that corners are cut or-
Oh, I know, I know, I know, you're not.
If we can.
I know it's a ton of work for them and they have a lot more considerations and assessments and stuff than we ever had before, so, you know, it's going to take more time.
Ben?
Just as a thought, Kate, carrying this out, how about thinking along the lines of maybe having an all-day workshop on the budget on a Saturday? I know, I know that's, that's, that's a hard situation, but I think where we could sit down and spend some time, instead of a short, you know, an evening meeting or something like this, we would appear, we would get, we would come in hopefully fresh and ready to look at something like that. I'm just, you know-
It's been done before. Yeah. We've done it both ways, I think.
I would like to see us both sit down together and do those workshops that we've done before instead of, I know that the budget committee doesn't usually attend very well, but I think it's really helpful for everybody to be able to sit down and, and talk back and forth and understand stuff as you go through it, with the principals and whatever there. I, I always thought those Saturdays when we were both there were helpful.
Yeah.
Even when there's-
I hate spending a Saturday.
Even when there's been a room full of people, because of what the selectmen need to do, what the schools need to do, and what the budget committee needs to do, we're in different phases of different processes when that happens. And, and this is not, this is not a plunk on anybody else, but generally, when we've held that meeting, that Saturday meeting, it's, I can come in, I can get some information, and then as I go through the process that I'm going to go through in reviewing the school's submission, questions are going to come up. So, it's, I suppose it's a nice kickoff event, but it's not a place where in the past, I can recall an enormous number of, of questions occurring, only because generally, when we hold it, people haven't had a great opportunity to, while they're reviewing other department budgets, to get ready for a meeting. You know, and so, it's, it's not that it hasn't had value. I'm not sure that it's come at a time when it has the most utility.
And I, I agree with you on that point. I'm sorry. Can I just, in that, you're, on, on both parties, that the questions don't come on the first presentation. The questions even for us is when, you know, after, you know, we have the presentation and then you're delving into it and you're like, oh, that's right. You know, what is this about? So, I absolutely agree that the questions don't come first time around. It's, it's the next opportunity. Suzanne?
Yeah. It's been my experience that those Saturday sessions really didn't accomplish a lot for the simple reason that when they come to our Saturday, they've been working on the town budget the rest of the week. And we burned the midnight oil to get our budget over to them so they have a chance to look at it, and they don't because they're, they're occupied with the town side. So, you go in there and it's a totally cold presentation. They have no idea what you're talking about. So, there's got to be a way to bridge that.
Yeah.
You know?
Ben?
I was thinking not so much for the working with the budget committee, but our-
No, just us.
But our budget workshops where we sit down and we hash it out. That's basically what I'm talking about. The other things are that when we deliver the budget, they've been, I've been through those things two years ago.
Can we hire ML to come back and run that meeting for us?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yes, Dan.
One of the things that it's, it's-
One of the things that it's always nice. It's always nice to get some information. I would try to limit any information delivery to four hours or less. Because even after three hours sometimes, it's just like.
Saturation.
I've done this for a living, okay? And when you have too much saturation and not enough ability to really absorb, it's just worse coming at you sometimes. The presentation with the budget committee has been, in the past, it's the first time we've seen it. And we've offered them to come just to see it for the first time themselves. And not necessarily for discussion, because I agree, it might not be the right time. It's a good time to ask some big questions because you're going to get into it later. But what we've had in the past, I think there's been a set presentation. We've had a limited, like 90 minutes or maybe 120 minutes. And it's go, 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 because that's my presentation is that. So what I would like to ask is, where do we want to go? Do we, it doesn't have to be a Saturday. It could be subsequent nights for presentation and how detailed, yeah, I know. And it could be a Saturday, but I would say either Saturday morning perhaps, and just limit it to 9:01, 8:30 to 12:30, something like that. If that's something that would be reasonable.
As a presentation or as a budget workshop?
Exactly. That's the question. That's the question. What do you want?
If you're going to do something of substance, if it has value, because if you're taking up four hours of somebody's day in order to, in order to do sort of a shotgun overview presentation, it's not so much that it hasn't been effective. But we're asking people to take time out of a Saturday or an evening in which they aren't in the best possible position to have a dialogue or to ask substantive questions. And so if we aren't providing somebody with that opportunity, being prepared to answer the substantive questions, then I'm not sure that there's value to it.
I think we're saying the same thing. Because I think it's important. You've got to be able to get answers and be prepared. Because what I was indicating, it was a presentation.
You have to have people who are prepared to ask also. And in their process, in order to be prepared, you have to have time.
Well, I think too, like last year's, you know, I think we might be talking about a few years back because last year's presentation, if we are discussing the presentation with the budget committee rather than us, you know, during a workshop or a work session on the budget, is presentation to the budget committee, I believe, I could be wrong, but it was only like two hours at a budget committee meeting. And then there were subsequent numerous meetings at which administration was present, building level administration and whatnot, to answer a lot of questions. And that budget was gone over with a lot of question and answers, a lot of free discussion. It actually worked really, really well. And I can't say that they're looking to have that same process again this year. But it stands to reason that it would likely be similar. We'll find out. You know, my, my primary concern here tonight is making sure that we have the time that we need and that our budget comes forward and that we are able to either by our own Saturday work session or, you know, several work sessions in the evenings, give the budget the attention that we need and ask the questions that we need of administration, have the conversations that we need to do the budget reform moving forward. Thank you.
Here's one other real question, I think, that either is advantageous. I know it is for me. During a budget process, there are different levels and different steps. You've got the teachers, what the teachers are requesting, then it gets to the principals, then it gets up to the superintendent, then it comes to us. At what point would it benefit us to see information of what people are thinking without necessarily having to come back and really discuss it until we see the final presentation by the superintendent? And I'm not saying on paper, because we're generating a lot of paper. I would probably like to see some of the phases as they come through just to get a feel of what's going to be coming our way. And not necessarily wait to the very end. Because we've known in the past that what's asked for doesn't make it all the way through. But it's helpful for me to see the phases, just, so I didn't know what you guys thought about that.
I think that, I think that people do different things in each stage of the process. And there are different decisions that are made at each stage.
Absolutely.
And that anything that we see that comes before, it's prepared for the board to look at and to review, only puts us in a position of going, well, you know, we really think that was the wrong decision for you to have made. Because other than that, we're accepting the professionals' recommendation based upon their overview of all of the buildings, all of the schools. And if something didn't get to you, why would you be interested in it? Because that, that suggests that I have a level of expertise that I don't have. Our decision-making.
That would be, because I do have the level of expertise in the area, and that's why I was just bringing it up.
In education.
In both education, understanding the budgets as I've seen them for 11 years, and actually in the preparation of the budgets, as I've done for a decade.
You know, sometimes that might be, have some value. But I don't think we can ask, put an extra burden on our administrators this year to provide additional information.
I'm not looking for them to provide additional information at all. I just want the normal stuff and all that. Because every step of the way, Ray goes and he prepares the paperwork, and it's all done by the system automatically in different columns. And if it was generated electronically, it's not a big deal. I'm not looking for anything else. Although it's something I just brought up for discussion. It's not something that I'm actually asking for.
Jenny, did you have your hand up? Okay. Really what I'm interested in is the budget approved or recommended by Susan Teller, sooner rather than later.
I think, Dan, to your point, in the past, we have kept a kind of a spreadsheet of things, of requests that were removed. So I think even, even in that kind of a format, we probably could provide that to you. The other piece I'd say is, your administrators understand the financial nature of this community. So they're not coming to you asking for things that they don't need as a bare minimum to run their schools. So both, you know, the principals, the other administrators, they're not coming to you asking for things that, that aren't absolutely necessary to run our schools. So I, I think as a mindset, they understand that.
And bouncing off that, if that were the case, there's not going to be a whole lot of modifications from that point. And what I was trying to do is get a jump on that by seeing some numbers or some thought processes early. That's all I was anticipating.
Anybody else? All right, it looks like new business A merged into new business B. Preliminary budget preparation and timelines. So we are free to move on to C, the 2.5% deposit discussion. So we'll pick up where we left off with our previous discussion. Ray, you were saying we had more in the unreserved fund balance than anticipated?
Yes. And as a result of having, you know, more in the unreserved fund balance, the board may or may not want to consider increasing the top, the first-year deposit into the contingency fund, the 2.5% contingency fund. During the ANF committee meeting, we did take a look at numbers. And determined that, and I don't know if this is where you want to jump in, that an additional $200,000 might be in order, if it's the board's pleasure, to make in the way of an initial deposit. That would be the increase from 200,000 in addition to the 75,000 that has already been authorized. If we did do that, that would reduce the unreserved fund balance from the $626,000 level to 426,000, which would be available for return to the taxpayers.
Is that the maximum percentage?
It's not.
The maximum that we can deposit is 2.5% of a roughly $16 million in the budget, which contributes to about 400,000. But we don't have 400,000. We have the initial 75,000 plus the 219 maximum. So the total can't be greater than those two numbers.
Jenny?
As much as I would really like to be able to be like the town does and suck away money for a rainy day, this is a new position for us to be in. And I'd rather start with a little at a time to get the town kind of used to the fact that we can do this. My other thought is, I would, and we have two contracts coming up, that we're not doing the bond because we'd like to get passed. I would like to have more money go back to tax relief in a good faith effort that maybe the town would vote positively on the contracts. My thoughts.
Can I, can I jump in on that one? One of the things that we can do with the contracts is if we happen to have money sitting in that fund, is that possible that we can request some of that money to be used to offset that contract?
No.
No, that's something different. So what are the permissible uses for the fund?
Tax relief.
Yeah.
And to deal with emergency expenses that could arise inside the school district, like a new roof, like a new boiler.
That's the only thing.
I need to clarify what was said, Dan. You said the, your understanding is the most that we can put is in addition to the 75?
An additional 219.
219. And can you please explain that to me, Dan?
Because it's the, on the expense side. We have two sides of money that go back. We can get additional revenue, overestimated revenue, but we can underspend the appropriation. Only the appropriation side is eligible to be put into the reserve. And that was the 219.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on my understanding. Okay. We've already put 75?
Yes.
Which leaves us 219?
There's a, there's available 219. We didn't actually, we didn't, there was no motions made at the subcommittee level. People had different numbers they were thinking about. An additional 200,000 was a round number that got discussed.
Suzanne?
Yeah. I too would like to give a chunk of change back to tax relief. And I think we're going to be doing that. Certainly a heck of a lot more money than when we were budgeting last fall. We were, I was, hasn't it, Ray had put 100,000 as a possible unreserved fund balance? And I didn't think we'd have that much. So we're, we're, even if we take the 200,000, we're still giving back over 400,000 of money that we never dreamed we'd have. So I would support putting more money in the rainy day fund. Because it's the first year, it's, I don't think we'll find ourselves in this enviable position again.
You're just helping out.
I know. It's a crapshoot, no matter what you do. So I'd like to err on the side of positive and stow some money away. Who knows what else, who knows is waiting for us out there between lightning and floods? And no one else, God knows.
Ben?
Well, I, I mean, what Suzanne said, and it's actually, we would be accomplishing two things. Putting aside a sum of money, 275,000 and change, for unforeseen expenditures that would come up, emergencies such as like the Mount Media Middle School roof and things of this nature. Plus, we're turning back 426,000 on tax relief. And.
32 cents.
And if you look at that, and yes, we have, we have two contracts that we hopefully will have settled and bring to the voters in March. But also, if we show a good faith effort in this, perhaps when we put the bond issue up a year or so from now, in 2014, 15, I think it would be, for the 2014, 15 school year, that we have, you know, done our due diligence. And I think that this would go a long way in garnering us some much-needed, I don't want to call it, support, respect, whatever, trust, whatever words you want to fill in the blank on. And I think that that, doing something like that, yeah, if we put in, if we hold everything and turn it all back on tax, it's a one-time shot. This 275 is there for use down the road.
And they've already paid their taxes on it.
They've already paid their taxes. They don't have to pay taxes on it again. And it's, it's getting the benefit, in this instance, it's like getting two bites of an apple. And I think this would make a lot more sense.
Go ahead, Dan.
There's also a method of leveling out the tax rate. As right now, the tax rate is where it is. Next year, we have Dunbartons, the following year, we don't. This is a possibility of our way of being able to impact somewhat 15 to 20 cents on the tax rate for when we have to produce a budget that does not have the income that we have now from Dunbar. Because if we can use it for tax relief in that year, it's a possibility we can try to even it out rather than have it as a way.
Jenny, you have your hand up?
Yeah. I just really think that when our taxpayers are looking at the budget in our contracts, they're going to be thinking we have the unknown of Dunbar leaving. They also expect that the school board gives them back a lot of money every year, every year on their tax rate. And I don't think that, even though they voted on it, a lot of people are going to understand that they're not going to get that money back in the tax rate, that we're going to have our own little fund with it. So I think that it's going to be a lot of, a lot of discussion about things and us keeping money instead of giving money. And the whole Dunbarton question, that it's going to be just one more thing for people to think about before they vote on our contracts. It makes me nervous. And I know we've given up the bond this year because we thought those were, you know, our focus this year. And so I really think we need to focus on making sure they get passed. And maybe, you know, having a little bit in our rainy day fund this year and like a little bit more next year to build it up. And making sure that we keep our focus where we wanted to keep our focus.
I think we are wise to put away the 2.5%. If I understand correctly, even if we put away the full 2.5%, we are still returning money to the taxpayers. We have done that every year. During my time on this board, four years, we've returned millions to the taxpayers.
And you know, most people in town don't have a clue.
Yeah, so we have, you know.
They don't have a clue.
We're still, even if we, we put away the full 2.5%, we're still able to send some money back for tax relief. And at the same time, we are positioning ourselves when we do need something, you know, that it can be done without an impact on the tax. We can, I mean, the 2.5, it was approved by the voters. So they said, yes, you may, you know, put away 2.5. I think we are wise to do so. Did you have your hand up? I don't know, myself. No? Dan?
There is a math thing that, for full disclosure, I have to, have to say it. The only part that we have any kind of discretion on is that appropriation side. So that revenue side of 407,000, we don't have any choice. It's, it's not really a return of funds, that word difference. It's going to be used to reduce the tax rate. But it was never ours to spend, so to speak. Only the appropriation side was ours to spend. And with an additional 200,000, technically, we'd be returning 19,000 of unspent appropriations. Okay? And if it feels better and we did something like only 125,000 in addition of the 75,000 for 200,000 in the bank, then it's half a million dollars that goes against the tax rate. Things of that nature. So, you know, there are, there are numbers we can go here depending on how we want or we feel more comfortable, some of it there, maybe we can split the line down, make.
Ben?
Like I said, I would have to say, yes, if we have to put, we need to do, I think we need to do both. And I think we need to do as much as we can in that rainy day fund because it is there. We're not going to pay, the taxpayer's not going to be asked to spend it. Yes, we have to go to the taxpayers. And I think it's part of the education process to let the taxpayers know what this money is going to be for and how, why this was done. Not that it's, that we're going to pocket this and have it, you know, that this, we can do all kinds of things with it. No, it's very limited, if I'm not mistaken. No, it's very limited, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, I mean, if we let the people know why we're doing this and also do some, turn some money back or turn, or put money towards reducing the tax rate, I think we will have accomplished two purposes. One, we're covering any unforeseen situations such as floods and water damage, that's, that's a real problem. And we are also helping to lessen the impact of the taxes, of the, because that's going to be set in October one, October first, October second, somewhere around in that period of time, things haven't changed. So I think that doing this, again, I'm, I'm thinking, and I feel, and I feel very strongly about this, that we would buy ourselves, if you want, I don't want to use that term in a sense of paying money for it, but I think it would garner us some good publicity and good PR.
Philip, you have your hand up?
Right. Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just one additional comment on, on what Ben was sharing with the board. Any use of this contingency fund has to be approved by the Department of Education. So that's another control, if you will, on, on the use of these monies.
Yeah.
Okay, Philip?
I forgot about that.
You have your hand up, right? I'm not... Jenny?
I would be, that's, kind of, that's the thing that, that makes it hard for me to vote on putting a, a lot of money into that account, is if we could save money in that account to do something educationally for our kids, you know, save up some money and do something that would be valuable to our kids, other than just an emergency, the only, we can put that aside for an oil tank or a boiler or, which, you know, benefits our kids. But, you know, we have that money sitting there and it has to go through so many different things in order to be able to be used. You know, it's kind of money sitting there.
Well, if, if I may, just a couple of examples in terms of thinking about the drainage issues here at the high school. That might be the type of project that we could target with these funds at some point in the future. So, you know, even though it's not a direct programmatic benefit to kids, I mean, certainly the, the safety of the parking lot, the security of the facility, I think...
But then you don't have to go in your budget and try to find the money to pay for it.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Do we have examples of what the DOE is inclined to approve?
It's new.
Not yet.
Well, that's it, because this is, I was just trying to follow along and see, see where the, the conversation has gone this far. Go ahead.
The same amount of time downside, they're getting funded, and they, the middle field down in Panama, but we had to go to the state to see if we could open money, how did they almost pay for that? We did. You had to go to the end. They just didn't spend it on me. But the same thing, the money they had. The only difference, they can also use that money to offset taxes. And the money that we're, excuse me, the money that we're returning to basic goes into their, their general fund, so they can use it for...
Yeah. Yeah, we're paying for all the...
It'd be nice if we, if it could go into a house.
Yeah.
So that we get the credit for it, that would be...
But it doesn't, it goes into the general...
Yeah, well, the votes are not we paid for.
Yeah. And they're the ones that use the money to offset taxes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we increase, increase our contribution to the two and a half percent fund by two hundred thousand dollars.
By two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so Suzanne has...
Second?
Motioning to increase by two hundred thousand, seconded by Dan, Dan, Ben, excuse me.
Could I ask Sue if she could amend her motion slightly to then direct Ray to modify the signed MS twenty-five and DOE twenty-five to reflect...
I don't think we have to put that in the motion. I think he knows he has to do that.
You do.
Well, remember what, the way I said it was the signed DOE twenty-five, because here's...
Okay, so you, we can sign him tonight and he can...
Modify him. Modify him after.
Okay.
Because we have to sign him tonight for him to get it in on time. And if, if he doesn't have time to change him tonight, you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
I do now.
Okay.
I'll accept it.
Yes.
Can you say you will say?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven in favor, one opposed.
Six guns in the parking lot, lady.
I'm sorry, I just...
Okay, it's okay. Thank you.
She's, she's given back three point one, two, over a million dollars and said, what do you do for me? It'd only hurt me every other time, so I understand your reluctance, but...
I, you know, I wish we could use it for the parking lot.
Well...
New business D summer professional development plan?
MC?
Good evening.
Hi, MC, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're dealing with letters, right, MC?
Yes. Actually, the information that I'm going to present to you could fall under commendations and good news. Brian asked me to present information about what your teachers have been up to this summer on professional development. So before I begin, I just would like to give a thank you shout out to the custodial staff, to Gary and his staff, because the more that teachers delve into the use of software and electronics and digital media for instruction, the more involved Gary and his team become. Administration, administration is always present at all of these trainings, and I will say that this summer we used, for air-conditioned spaces, we were in this room, as well as at Mountain View Middle School. And administration's always very gracious to welcome us into their home and to not schedule things in these spaces because we really, we take it over.
And they have air conditioning.
They do. That's exactly the case. As you know, school didn't get out until June twenty-eighth this year. Typically, we're able to squeeze a week of professional development in the end of June. We didn't have that luxury this year. So most of our work took place the end of July and into August. The emphasis for our work was to continue initiatives that began several years ago around literacy in the content area, literacy in general for English, mathematics, digital literacy, and work around behavior. So what did the teachers do? Well, Mountain View Middle School has adopted and is implementing a new core math program this year, Big Ideas Math. So we had teams of teachers working on the implementation of both print resources and digital resources, along with planning their instructional units for the year. They have everything mapped out for all of the courses at Mountain View. We had over at the high school, teachers creating a digital catalog, if you will, for Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry Performance Assessments that are, they align, I would say, and they look like the performance assessments that students will be engaged in for the upcoming Smarter Balance testing. So they include both informational texts, they include digital, they require students to pull all kinds of pieces together. The reason that we're creating a digital catalog is so that the teachers at Mountain View can share, who teach Algebra One and Algebra Two, the same resources across the board for these high school courses. We had six high school teachers and one Mountain View Middle School teacher attend AP training. We trained teachers in physics, chemistry, Spanish, English, and European history. We had an SAU administrative retreat for two days with a focus on getting ourselves upgraded on bullying year two, harassment, and the broadening landscape around mental health and the issues that teachers and staff and communities are dealing with. We did Green Book training. Green Book is, we affectionately call it the Green Book. It's, it's a compendium of best practices that all teachers who come into the SAU that are new go through a training. It's got this big green cover on it. It is really what guides and provides a commonality to lesson structure and brain-based learning, the pieces that we want to see when we come into a classroom, student engagement. We had fifteen new teachers participate in that. I hope you got to see in the Goffstown news that we had a workshop, combined workshop with Bedford teachers, where we brought Dan Meyer in. We had forty teachers, twenty-seven from Goffstown, combination of middle, high, math, science, and special ed, and thirteen teachers from Bedford. The following day after Dan Meyer was here for two days to work with the teachers, we had eighteen of Goffstown math teachers, fifteen math and three special ed, collaborate on, now that you've had this training, what's next? What do we do with this? Where do we go? So planning has been put into place for that for this next year. We had seventh and eighth grade English Language Arts teachers work on furthering the implementation of close reading strategies, which has been an initiative that we've been working on for two years now. We had close reading for K six. We had fifty-four elementary teachers attend this. It was over at, at Mountain View, and the trainers were two high school teachers. It's pretty amazing. Forty-three of the forty-six elementary teachers attended, so we got almost everybody covered. And those, the teachers who were not able to attend had childcare issues. People really wanted to be here. We have a group of five senior English teachers who are collaborating together with Steve Porche and an outside consultant to take their English course and put it on a Moodle platform. Part of what we're preparing relative to digital literacy is to get our kids college and career ready. And when students go off into the collegiate world, a lot of the work that they do is on a platform like a Blackboard, where you, you know, you interact and you do hybrid courses and where you're in class sometimes, but communicating with your teacher and your classmates through the internet and these platforms. And these teachers are going to pilot this. We're going to grow it slow and see what it looks like, but this is what our kids are going to need to know and be able to interact with once they leave us. We had an SAU orientation for new staff, where we had twenty-five new staff members, where we talked to teachers about some of the important policies that we have, that we are required to make sure that people have an introduction to before they come and work with our kids. So your teachers this summer logged over two thousand six hundred hours of professional development.
Wow.
It was a powerful, powerful summer. If you're wondering what next, that's a conversation at C and E, but I can tell you that the November and March teacher workshop days are already planned to be able to carry these initiatives through, as well as some exciting things that we've got going on after school. So it's, it's just a real privilege to sit here and talk to you and tell you that, as you were talking about earlier, you know, teachers without a contract, and yet they, they care, they could not care more. They show up, they are consummate professionals, and it was a great summer.
That's wonderful, MC, thank you.
Yeah, really exciting.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
I'd like to thank MC for all the work that she's done. One of the things she didn't share with the board is, part of the model that she shifted to in terms of professional development is developing in-house expertise. What MC has shared with teachers is, we can't just send our teachers out to cookie-cutter workshops anymore. They come back and say, gosh, we're, we already know all this stuff. So she, it's a nice problem, I think, to have, but MC's leadership has really been significant in this regard. Thank you.
I would just like to point out with how MC has done her professional development and the, how she's engaged the teachers, I think our taxpayers should know how much money that we're saving them in the course, of courses, for our teachers to go out and learn this information, like on the core, you know, the core program and stuff, that our teachers have to have that information. And she's just set up a really awesome program where, you know, two people go to the workshop who teach these people, who teach those people, and go around, and it saves the district an awful lot of money.
It's probably also worth reminding folks that the majority of the professional development that MC's talking about comes from Title II A, so it's coming from grant money. Years ago, we had a pretty significant amount of money in the general fund for professional development. I think it was well over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that has been absolutely cut to the bare minimum that's required for us per the teacher contract for course reimbursement. So we've continued to do more with less.
And I, I think too, Jenny, as much as we, we save money, I also think, again, it speaks to the caliber of the educator that you have here, because there is, there's such a breadth of talented people who, given the opportunity to lead and the training, they, they jumped on it. They take it and they, they run with it, and it's, it's an amazing thing to watch. So I thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Thanks, MC. All right, I'm going to skip E for now and go to the laptop lease request. We have Gary here, so we'll go ahead and address that.
Come on up, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Would you like me to provide a little general information? What, what we're presenting the board with this evening is, as the board likely knows, we have our laptops, all of our teachers each have a laptop, and we have laptops in our schools, laptop carts in particular, we lease those. We do so to have a predictable budget and amount of money that we spend year after year to stabilize the costs and to have a set replacement cycle. Our current laptop lease is for four hundred and fifty units. We have two different leases. This is primarily for teachers at Mountain View and at the high school. Two laptop carts of twenty-five units each at Mountain View, four carts of twenty-five units at the high school, one cart of twenty-five units at Bartlett, one cart of twenty-five units at Maple, and it includes administrative and other laptops as well. This laptop lease is set to expire this school year. Apple has come to us offering a twenty-two percent discount in the units themselves if we were to look at re-upping early. So you get a twenty-two percent sale, they're running a promotion right now, and there's an increased value of the anticipated trade-in of the current equipment, which we're projecting at eighty-four thousand dollars. So right now you've got laptops that are three and a half years old, but some are as old as I think four to six years, Gary had shared, and they're, they're really requiring a fair amount of work from the technicians. As you know, I think we don't have more technicians than we need, so these folks are very, very busy. So what we have proposed for this evening is to consider re-upping the laptop lease early with the, the saving of twenty-two percent and an increase of eighty-four thousand in the equipment return. We would get a portion of that back in the spring of turning in our old computers, we're just not sure exactly what that amount would be.
No, I think that they committed to that eighty-five thousand, eighty-three thousand dollar amount.
In the spring?
No, well, we'd have, we're actually going to get it back earlier than that. We'll get it back as soon as we get the older laptops to them. Two reasons why this is a really good deal at this point. Reason number one is our laptops, Apple Care, which is the extended warranty, ended last April. So on these old, older machines, which are three and a half years old now, anything that goes wrong with them is out of our pocket. And because they're old, things are starting to go wrong with them. So we're going to be putting money, and we've already started putting some money, into these older laptops that... these older laptops that we're never going to, we'll never see that money again. It's really, you know, to replace like a screen or a trackpad on an older laptop just really isn't worth it. And through, and Apple Partner, they're willing to give us, I think, a really good value for the old machines if we buy the newer machines right now. Now, the newer machines are actually the metal aluminum-bodied models, because they don't even make the plastic ones anymore that we have. And they're not the heirs of the Pro models, so they still have the DVD drives and they have ethernet ports, both of which are important to us. A lot of teachers are still playing DVDs in the classroom through their laptops. And when it comes time for NWA EA testing, for example, we hardwire laptops with the ethernet ports. And so as far as I'm concerned, it's a really good model for us to be upgrading to. They've dropped the price, as Brian mentioned, $200 per computer and so forth. And it doesn't break the budget. We're not asking for any additional money to do this.
It's also important for the board to know that the new Smarter Balanced Assessment that we're going to be required to take in 2015 is also a computer-based program, so these computers would also be used in the administration of that required assessment.
Do we have a bottom line, money-wise, what we're looking at?
It's what we budget yearly for our lease.
So it's within the budget?
Yeah, it doesn't change.
And it's reducing our potential expenditures for repairs?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Jenny?
Will we have that extra money with the discount to reinvest in other technology that we need, or is the...
No, it's with the discount that we're going to afford to do this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, there's...
I like the way you think, Jenny.
Yeah.
It was a try.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we have some deals similar to this, the last time the lease was up?
Yeah, they always...
I think this one is more attractive.
This one's very attractive, because we're getting an actual, the model is upgradable of what we currently have. And we're essentially the same money that we budgeted.
Are we looking for a motion this evening?
We are. Can I ask one question first?
Question.
We just paid about $134,000 for the leases and the manifest we approved tonight. We do all of this trading within the next number of months, I'm supposing? When's the first payment going to be due?
Actually, this, I think, and Ray, you could confirm this, like $33,000 left in the lease budget. That plus the trade-in value is the first payment.
Due when?
The...
Thirty-three is due...
The $33,000 is in October. The trade-in value is scheduled for November.
Yeah. When we get the laptops back to them.
So let me ask this question. If we did nothing, would that $33,000 stay in the bank? Or as unexpended funds, or is that...
It would stay in the bank as unexpended funds.
So really, this is costing us $33,000 to do it early, and your estimate of, because 84, I'm looking at now, take the $84,000 added to the $33,000, we're at $120-plus. Our repairs won't ever exceed that.
Won't exceed what?
$120,000 between now and when the lease would normally run out.
Yes. We would, we would normally be doing this probably in April, so it's actually six months early.
Okay.
And we're not going to get as much for the older laptop next day.
It'll cost us another $85,000, because we won't get the 22% discount.
Right.
So...
And the model that they're currently offering us at this 22% discount may not even be available. If you see what's happening throughout the Apple line, they're taking away the DVD drives.
Right.
New IMAX don't have DVD drives.
Right.
They're taking away the ethernet ports, and I'm kind of here going, "Oh, my God, we need those features."
So, but in reality, what we're going to do is we're going to spend $33,000 to get the machines we need, that we can extend it probably three and a half years from now, where we might not have them. So we have a time for you to plan to transition away from CNE. Okay?
I'll make the motion we approve... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll wait, I can do it after.
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the plan to replace the laptops early.
Second?
Okay, second by Suzanne. Further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Brilliant, Annabeth, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Good to see you. All right, if you just dropped back, new business E, ESOL teacher request?
The board may recall that we had budgeted for two ESOL, which is English for Speakers of Other Languages, teachers this year. We only filled one of those positions, not knowing what our enrollment would be this year. I have to tell you that we have 21 new students that we had move in this summer, that we are screening for ESOL needs, and we are fully expecting to need to fill that position. So we already have the money budgeted, so I think more informational than anything, but we wanted to let the board know that we are planning on filling that position due to our increased needs, including at least one student who speaks no English, which require up to three hours per day just for that one child.
Per log, right?
Twenty-one over last year's.
We ended the year with 13 ESOL students, and we picked up 21 more since then.
So did we start with the 13 and add 21?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. And I think this is, this is an example of a trend that we've continued to see.
But it's something that was budgeted?
It was budgeted.
So we knew... Okay. All right, confirmations.
Okay, confirmations, I will send around. You had one teacher resignation, Joanne Berry from Mountain View.
Do you want to go down?
Okay. Teacher confirmations, we have one, two, three, four, five new teachers since the last time the board met. We have co-curricular, including yearbook, student council, drama, chorus, and band, sports, and we have notifications of student teacher, student intern, and one track change. And you'll note that I handwrote on that. It's supposed to be Masters 15 to Masters 30. And we had one more teacher that we're quite literally walking in. This was the last teaching position we had available that we needed to fill. You may recall that we had a .55 or so Title I teacher that the board had approved over the summer due to the increased amounts of Title I money we received as a function of the no longer having the requirements of CNE and DNE after the New Hampshire Department of Ed got the waiver for no child left behind. And it's .45 library and media specialist that we were able to combine into one position. And we have hired someone whose name is Laura Bascom, B-A-S-C-O-M. She comes to us from the Huxit School District, where she's been working in the library as a media assistant. She's certified in elementary ed and is very knowledgeable about technology in collaboration with teachers. So if I could add in Laura Bascom, and she's coming to us as a Masters Step One. And I'm sorry, but quite literally, this was just this afternoon.
In what school?
Bartlett. She's Bartlett.
Make a motion to approve.
What are you approving, Philip?
Actually, these are all just confirmations.
These are all confirmations.
Because these have all been on our...
There's a confirmation of resignation, confirmations, and notifications.
I say they're the ones that were hired over the summer.
This teacher came in after the summer, so you would need to approve this one in particular, that you're not just confirming Laura Bascom.
No, we are, because these are all new hires. So, and the same under the teacher confirmations. Should we be adding them?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Jenny, have a question?
Would you send out a card for the track change, please?
I will, I will.
Philip, you had a motion on the table? What was your motion?
My motion was intended to approve...
How about move the list as presented?
Yeah.
I'll accept the motion.
Move the list as presented.
Suzanne's making it. Suzanne trumped you on the making of the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Ben. Any other conversation, questions, discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
We are you now, Annabeth, thank you. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting? No, Dan, I did just, I had the opportunity to look at a policy, policy BBBG, as far as the election or the officer go, and I think that we're all set.
Is it...
BBBG.
Right.
So as far as the election at your place earlier in this meeting. Any other business that may come before the board? Seeing none?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I only, I know Mountain View is having their open house on 9/24 for Fifth and Seventh and 9/26 for Sixth and Eighth Grade. I think I remember the high school, but do you know what it is on hand?
Tell them.
Okay.
On behalf of the Senate.
Yeah, I couldn't find the elementary schools. Open house tapes, is that something the board would like?
Yes.
All right, I will entertain a motion to enter non-public. Pursuant to, I'm sorry, pursuant to RSA 91A:3 Roman 2 Subsection A, the dismissal, promotion, and compensation by a public employee or the discipline of such employee, or the investigation and charges against him or her, unless the employee in fact it has a right to a reading or a possibility to be opened, in which case the request should be granted. Negotiations.
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Second by so, I need full confirmation.
Non-hank.
Non, please, Senator.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, we are now in non-public. Thank you guys for coming.
While we're...
Good to see you.
While we're in public.
Yes, sir.
Ray is lining up the MS...